Ready for tomorrow? Which state? Mexico-Besz. Yes!
Seventy percent chance of rain. Then what?
No, we're not talking about that.
We're not.
You gotta be a Girl Scout, be prepared.
I've decided that's not happening.
That's not happening. So whatever you say is inaccurate.
The reality is that if we move inside...
Yeah.
So then we have to sit in the main hall. We have it, we have to have it.
You put those boats in the gym?
I can.
But none of them are huge.
They're huge. They're gonna take a boat to the room. And there's gonna be real crowded and real hot and real sticky. We can move inside. We can line the booths up and down.
Between the heat and the rain.
People aren't gonna come out.
Start by saying pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our vision statement is connecting, engaging, growing. I consider the creation of agenda amendments or deletions.
We do not have any.
Well done. Let's move on to good news around the district.
Good news around the district. I would like to start off and acknowledge and recognize our recent retirees that have come to join us this evening. I'll take the list here so I can acknowledge those that decided not to perform this this evening as well. Although it looks like we're already here. So I don't have in front of me, um, exact years of service and I apologize for that. So when you come up, you're gonna have to help me out, alright? So let's, uh, go ahead and start with Brian. And I think it's somewhere around, I don't wanna guess, forty years and nine months. Forty years and nine months?
Wow!
That is awesome. We need to, you mind taking a picture? Forty years and nine months. That is awesome. Thank you so much. You're welcome. Appreciate your service. Thank you. Do you have anything you wanna say?
Glad, thank you for this.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just great being here.
What's your plans for retirement?
Um, oh, more crazes, I think. We're going to Alaska in August.
Are you really? That's awesome. Fantastic. Well, thank you so much for your service. That's awesome. And for you and for everybody here that's retiring, uh, I hope that you will always feel welcome and that you won't be strangers until you drop in and see us.
I'm back visiting.
Okay, alright. Good deal. Terry?
Apparently I made a good decision when I moved his country.
Terry, how long, how long did you work for us?
Just over ten years.
Just over ten years?
I'm just a rookie, I guess.
Congratulations and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Can you do this?
Yeah.
That's pretty much it.
Alright. There's a box of...
Oh, okay.
Yep, thank you. And Mindy. I didn't realize this, but she had retired and came out of retirement and retired again. Kinda sort of, yeah, but never really stopped. And still isn't really stopping.
Thank you.
I think you're gonna still be around and help out a little bit in some way?
Right.
Alright. Thank you. Planning on Florida trips, I heard, is that right?
Planning on Florida trips and she sent me about five other calls in Florida and Tennessee. Yeah, it's unknown at this point.
Well, John, yours is not finished yet. Um, so this is a, this is, you can borrow this one?
Excellent.
Cause we were a last minute addition.
Thank you.
You can retire it and then we need that back? I don't want it back. You can keep it, say you get the real one, okay?
I'd like to say thank you to Ford as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a wonderful experience to be here. Had a great time. I left the agency, I thought it, uh, I didn't have near the tough time that I have leaving here, so. Love the kids and the opportunity to be here has been a wonderful place to be. Thank you.
Awesome. And then Jody Swinburne and Joy Devant couldn't make it tonight, but they, they are also, we have guests for them. And then we have Michael. I thought I saw him tonight. I thought I saw him come out. I guess we did not. Never mind. So, and then Michael Erdman also. So those are all of our retirees. And again, just, uh, thank you all. Thank you, um, Scotts, for putting up with, uh, you two putting up with each other and just all the hours. It's gonna be, I know you guys are still gonna be around, but it's gonna be weird not, uh, seeing you all the time.
I thought you were seven days a week right now.
Yeah, I know, we'll still be seeing you guys. Thank you, guys. Did you guys do rock, paper, scissors or?
Actually, Abby did. I did lose the other one. Um, so our gym renovations are wrapping up.
We saw it.
It's looking wonderful. There are still some finishing touches to go. Um, they're finishing the trim. We have, um, a quote coming in on some graphics to put up in the upper parts of the gym. So very exciting to see that all come together. A few staff members have started poking their heads in and have heard lots of wonderful feedback. So very excited and thankful to Kevin, Scott and their group for all the work that they have done once the big, you know, major companies have moved out. Um, I think at one point we had about ten janitors all painting trim in their socks because they were afraid to mess up the floor. So they all had their shoes off and painting. So very thankful to all of them. Uh, today, you might have seen on Facebook, but we kicked off kind of our school year with Wonders and Study Scene Training for all of our teachers. Those are the reading curriculums that we adopted back in the spring. Wonderful feedback from our staff as well as the trainer. The trainer told me at the end that this was one of her most favorite staffs that she's got to work with and that our teachers were able to go so much deeper in that training than what other staff is normally able to do. And they were asking wonderful questions. She was very excited to get to work with them. And, um, as of, I think, last week, we kind of finally finalized plans, um, to where we are going to be able to offer Spanish as a related arts or specials in the 306 building, which is very exciting. This is kind of what's, one of the things that we had in mind when we started working with junior, senior high to share staff. So the Spanish teacher at the high school has been wonderful in supporting Bobby Haas, who is taking on this class. So we're excited to see what she has to offer for students this year.
We have, um, underdone several upgrades in our building over the summer. As you guys saw as we came through, um, our auto service, uh, lab and our collision repair lab were both painted and looked fantastic. Our corridor floors were stripped and buffed in all the way down to the original terrazzo and it looks phenomenal. Um, our walls painted, just upgrades throughout and it looks great. I'm excited for everyone to see it as they come in the building. Um, through the course of the school year, we had applied, uh, for and gotten a reserve Perkins grant and were able to purchase, um, dental shares. And we're in the process of building our dental career, dental office, for lack of a better word. Um, similar with our software development program, um, we purchased the, um, the computers to start to add this coming school year as well. And pending board approval, we, um, are going to start a partnership with ABC Construction Academy, um, for our construction program this year that will follow, um, the same, uh, standards set by the state. And they will offer a lot of certifications, full credit with Vincent. And it is a Department of Labor apprenticeship program. So I'm super excited for that to begin.
I was looking at my notes from this meeting last year and we're fully staffed. That was one of my good news around the district and that's, we are fully staffed again. That's something that you never take for granted and I'm going forward somewhere that, um, we continue to be that way. Um, we had our staff, a good core of our high school teachers with transition to the block. Um, we had a good four of them come in about two weeks ago and we had a professional goal in that line, planning for the block and then teaching for the block. And, um, our teachers are really excited about that transition. Um, and for the last week, we got our AP scores back at the beginning of July. Um, and Ms. Rebecca Patton got her score on the role mystery one exam. And if you know any part of her story, she's had a, um, a busy second semester. Um, and so for her to accomplish that with everything that she's had going on, um, is just a true testament to, to kind of, uh, her she is. So we're really excited and proud of her for that. ECTA have anything?
Yes, we, I don't know what I was gonna say. Um, a new teacher day was held and we provided lunch and talked with them. I think that went smoothly that afternoon. And then just to piggyback on Mrs. Rob, I said I was a part of the training today for the wonders and we all really liked the presenter. A lot of times you get presenters and then do a training and they just maybe don't quite get it across to you very well. But she did a great job. We really liked her. We really liked what she had to say. We still have a lot to learn and a lot of it's gonna be trial and error and, uh, you know, life. And so we are, we got a good start on knowing how to use that program, what to...
Is a presenter going to be available for questions and follow-up?
She, I don't know if it's the same one. She told us that she, somebody would be coming back for some meeting, that we chose what we wanted it to be. So I don't know if it's her or she's the only one for us or...
She's not. It could be one of many. I could probably put in a request for her. I don't know if it would be granted, but I could ask.
Well, just phone call her or an email? What about this?
She's sending me a bunch of stuff, um, as far as videos, things to send to parents. Um, so I don't think she's going anywhere. I think she'll be an email away. So we can reach out to her.
I do know she came from Michigan, been home from Michigan. So I don't know if Indian people were full because usually have territory, but we may be more than Indian, are from territory. I don't know.
She mentioned several presenters.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
Um, Mrs. Brophy got invited to a wedding out of the country. And, um, so she is leaving at two in the morning and I told her that she was not to come tonight, that she needed to take care of her kids and her dogs and get off to the wedding. So she was not able to be here tonight by my directive. And, um, she did say that she's excited that all teaching positions are filled, um, that they've already begun meeting and planning sessions with the instructional coaches. And that her library renovations are underway, that they've purchased the Beanstack, uh, reading program. The new carpet is in and they have furniture on order for their new learning station. So she's pretty excited about that. And then, uh, another thing that, uh, is exciting is tonight is our first official livestream. So smile, you're all on candid camera. Um, there's a recording device up there and it is, it gives a split screen and you see a panoramic of this entire room. And then when everybody's, then when somebody is speaking, there's another camera that zooms in on the speaker. So right now my bald head should be taking up the other half of the screen. And so, um, it's kind of cool. If you guys get bored, especially your retirees, you get bored the third Thursday at 7:00 PM, you can tune in and, and watch our spine tingling board meetings. And so even, even in Florida. I don't know about the Alaska news, if you have website, yeah. If you have web, internet access, you'll be able to, be able to watch us.
Could we have the makeup consultant come in for our executive meetings?
Sure, yes, yeah.
Not that any of us need it.
That, uh, that concludes the good news around the district, I believe.
Okay, do we have any public comments? One? And I will say the retirees and such, if you don't wanna stick around for the rest of the meeting and such, feel free. We won't have our feelings hurt too bad if you...
Forty years is long enough.
You guys, hey, hey, one, one thing, you guys might wanna stick for the first agenda item. Um, we're gonna talk about a, a new, exciting partnership with the community foundation. If you're interested, wanna hear that.
Let's have a report and take care of consent agenda.
Okay. The consent agenda includes the minutes from the regular and executive session board meetings held on, uh, April 17th. The account payable claims totaling $2,332,065.42 and payroll claims totaling $1,063,072.2. Uh, we have a donation from Lydia Sweet Treats for a hundred dollars. Um, and that concludes the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve. Second?
Motion in second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries?
Cause we do the B before A.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, thank you. Um, I, I didn't, I, I messed up when I was doing the agenda and meant to put you guys A and I put you a B, but we're gonna do B first, so.
I appreciate it.
We're gonna do the, oh, I, I, we're gonna do the Elwood Education Foundation creation process and consideration. And, uh, um, would you like to speak to it a little bit? Do you, do you mind?
No, not at all.
Okay.
You can come up here if you want or here or where.
Well, I'm just trying not to grab the camera.
Well, you project nicely. We should hear and see. I'm, I'm simultaneously watching on one screen and taking minutes on the other, so.
So as a refreshing twist, I'm not coming here asking for money. Um, I'm coming here to offer, um, some assistance right now. The Anderson Community School Corporation is the only district, uh, in all of Madison County that has a supporting 501(c)(3) network. Uh, the Anderson Education Foundation to support the academic mission of the Anderson Community Schools. And, um, I know you're probably in a hurry to get home, but just for a little bit of context, my day job is president and CEO of the Madison County Chamber of Congress, but I'm also a 2003 graduate of Elwood High School. I'm very proud of that. It's always bothered that we don't have another supporting mechanism to offer to our teachers, uh, and our students to help support the academic mission here. And so brainstorming with, uh, our partners at the Madison County Community Foundation and seeing how the mechanics of this would work. The most logical and easiest to start up rather than create a completely different 501(c)(3), they are offering their 501(c)(3) status, their legal entity status, uh, where we can have an advisory board in place that oversees two funds in the name of the Elwood Education Foundation. Two funds are, are, in my opinion, critical. One is to meet the immediate need of getting funds that we would raise into the hands of teachers to help support, uh, and expand educational opportunities here for our Elwood students. The other would be a permanent endowed fund. So one would think of it as a checking account and a savings account. So over time, a portion of the funds we would read would go into the endowed fund. So over time that builds up and twenty, thirty years down the road, we've now got this evergreen fund that can sustain teacher grants and student opportunities. I think I've explained that, at least the nuts and bolts of it. Happy to answer any questions around the concept and what we're trying to build here.
So what I'm asking for the board tonight is just for board approval, um, to start the process of creating an Elwood Education Foundation. And we would, the, the first step would be, I believe, please correct me if I'm wrong, the first, our next step would be, um, to identify board members. And as it stands right now, what we've discussed is, uh, Mrs. Anderson would be on that board to help represent Elwood Community Schools. But then there would be other members in, in the community.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the, the, the two asks of the board tonight, one is, uh, to, to have a permanent allocation of someone that may, that is on the board from the schools, uh, so we never settle that tie. Secondly, in, in the occurrence, I don't foresee it, but in the occurrence that the advisory board, the Elwood Education Foundation goes away, those funds are permanently housed at the Madison County Community Foundation. And we will need to write into our governance documents that the Elwood School Corporation is the benefactor in that instance, just so that they're always going to come back to the Elwood schools. So need approval for both of those things.
So I need a motion.
Motion. Second?
Motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I've made multiple attempts to work with Madison County Foundation over the years to start up a foundation, but it always, it's fizzled out, maybe because of my lack of follow-up. But, so I'm really happy to see that this is coming about.
In the last three years, they've had a massive change in leadership, both within the staff and their board. And they're... the staff and their board. And they're more focused on community engagement than they have ever been before. So I, I won't say that it wasn't you, but, but also like I, I know the team in place now is absolutely committed to make this work.
That's great. I'm not trying to be critical anymore. I'm just trying to say I'm very happy.
And I, I'd be remiss if I didn't give a thank you to the Anderson Community School Corporation. They've given us everything, all of their governance documents, how they operate. They want this to succeed as well. So they're absolute team players.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We need to get groceries at all funeral homes.
I can help you with that.
We are moving on to personnel report and other fun spine tingling things. So feel free to leave. And now if you'd like to leave any guests, you're welcome to stay.
I'm not as polite as the former teachers, so I... I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
How about the personnel report?
Personnel report. We have on new hires, we have Nick Beatty as a bus driver, Kane Jones, junior high English teacher, Serena Felty, high school English teacher, Ashley Norris, school nurse at the intermediate, Ashley Clayball Gardner, intermediate school cafeteria, Kristy Moody, intermediate school cafeteria, Lorna Tinkle, sixth grade teacher at the intermediate, Christopher Ruder, resource special education teacher at the intermediate, Lacey Copeland, behavior support IA at the intermediate, Julie Schwinn, Title I instructional assistant at the intermediate, Patricia Haskett, special education resource teacher at the intermediate, Casey Long, family liaison. That actually should be down at the transfers. That's, that's my mistake that Casey is moving into a new position. Chelsea Jones, filling one, not creating a new position, filling a position. Chelsea Jones, kindergarten IA at the elementary, Curtis Bragg, elementary maintenance, Madeline Hatfield, music instructor at the elementary, Michelle Thompson, alternative teacher at the elementary, Rachel Brown, developmental pre-K teacher at the elementary, Rebecca Baldwin, Title I IA at the elementary, Alexa Jeffries is moving from Title I to an IA position, Stella Jeffries is going to be emotional disability IA at the elementary. And then I think Chris was already mentioned up there. I thought I had his name. So those are the new hires and transfers and then separations. They have Kelly Heine, instructional coach at the intermediate, Quincy Henderson, intermediate nurse, Jamie Jettie, elementary maintenance, Maddie Penwell, elementary pre-K IA, Mackenzie Moore, elementary FAP IA, John Kelly, Heinz, criminal justice instructor, Beverly Taylor, elementary cafeteria, Karen Leisure, elementary cafeteria. And I believe, well, all of those separations that were teaching positions or nurse maintenance, all of those positions have now been filled. I'm not 100% certain on the, on the IA positions. And then coaching recommendation, we have Amanda Marcus for seventh grade volleyball coach.
Need a motion to accept the personnel report?
I'll make a motion. We accept the personnel report.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Contract adjustments.
We have Mrs. Anderson's contract that we had talked about last year, moving from a 220-day contract to a 260-day contract. So recommending that her contract be moved to a 260-day contract. And then Kylie Carr, we had paid additional days of her contract last summer, and I'm asking that her contract, those days be added to her contract officially so she would move from a 205-day contract to 215-day contract. And then Yvette Lawson, because of her change in duties and responsibilities of moving into HR, back into our HR coordinator role, that she would be compensated accordingly and per salary be adjusted because of her increased job responsibilities. And the details of those contracts are in the executive content.
Move to approve. Second?
Got a motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Student lunch prices.
Just questions, 260 days, does that match up with your 200 days?
Correct. Yeah, we have, we have, I'm trying to think of who all we have on 260. Most, most of our district administrators are 260. Our coordinator positions are 260 and mine is 260, correct. And so then with the 260 contract, then you get the 20 vacation days and the PTO days as opposed to following the school breaks for your time off. Lunch prices, Mrs. Fred had presented last year and asked that lunch prices be increased during the year last year. And we had increased lunch prices. And she had told us at that time that, that we would need to be, we would need to make more adjustments for this upcoming school year, but she wasn't sure what those would be. She has the numbers in now based on what the state is reimbursing. So a lot of that were tied to what the state will reimburse. And so based on the new prices that came out July 1, Mrs. Fred is recommending that student lunch prices move up from $3 to $3.15 a lunch.
It was interesting to get the detail that she provided. I went through the calculation.
Yeah.
I move we approve. I'll second that.
Got a motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
My understanding is basically had to be done. Correct.
For federal rules.
Correct.
Motion carries. Student handbooks.
So we have the elementary, intermediate, career center, and high school handbooks. These are draft copies that are, have the highlighted changes. And I knew there was a couple of questions. One question was asked about the elimination of the language about the DAH. And that was, there was references in the elementary and intermediate handbooks about the discipline and attendance corporation policy. And that was an old policy manual that was maintained by a former district administrator. And it had not been referenced or updated in over five years. And it's no longer being used. And so that handbook is no longer in use and approved. So we took the language out.